Love you too, girl. See you later. Be back, baby. God, please be back. May I be back? Jesus name. I had to have way too much courage or something. Thank the Lord. How much more do those that know they're going to war have to? What are the generations before me faced? To end slavery, to end all kinds of other bad things. It resonates in me that book bound. The northern states were able to peacefully end slavery. But it took a civil war to stop the South. God, if there is a good Christian peaceful way to end the bad stuff that's going down, please let your will be done. I am so tired of the violence and the bloodshed and being told that I'm a no-good US citizen if I don't go ahead and condone it. God, you've called us to speak up and out against evil, but you've also called us to use wisdom and discretion and to speak in turn. I remember the accounts of Queen Adasa and how she knew there was a right and a wrong way. She waited for the right moment to speak her piece. God, please give me wisdom and discernment. Ask us in Jesus's name. Oh, boy, here's the rabbit neighbor. They called the sheriff's department because I was commenting on her, uh, planters. I love that stuff. Got more wood. It gets me. The people they don't approve of also want to have their off-grid, off-the-grid homes and stuff. The absurdity is not lost on me. Or the wastefulness of the infighting. We have so much in common. And yet, we're letting those whose best interests are to keep us at our throats, to keep us from holding, uh, uniting, to hold them accountable, to limit their power to where it should be. Instead, we are letting them turn us against each other to create perpetual fighting. That ain't right. And what's even worse is using fear intimidation and blackmail to keep people who belong in public events away from public events. That ain't right. Looks like we got a full house. The Karens are finally attending the school board meetings. And I wanted to be there early. Truth to Jesus Christ. Wait. Lord, I thank you for your hand of protection over me. Jesus's name, amen. Look at all the Karen's cars. All visitors report to the office. What I'm gonna try to do is show as clear as possible. There are no hours posted. I'm a warrior. See how there's no hours posted? There's all kinds of things posted here, but none of them are hours. No hours posted at any point in this area. None. I just want to pan it in its entirety. None of these are school hours. None. Nothing was posted online. There's no hours for accessing the office, which, as you know, if they don't have the time for the school board, you're required to do.
We will move on to our approval of our minutes. Does anybody have any expressions or additions to the minutes of our January meeting? Not, I would entertain a motion to approve those? Some parliaments are seconded to approve the minutes of the January school board meeting. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If there are none, we'll see the votes. Lord, please take them. Sedlin?
Yep.
Bailey?
Yeah.
Beth?
Yes.
Johnson? Yes. Motion carries. On to bills and financials of TCU School District. Any questions on those? So let's put some signatures to the girl up here. Yep. Any other comments, questions on the financials for teaching? Not, all entertain a motion to approve those? Is there a second? Some parliaments are seconded to approve the bills and financials for TCU School District. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If there are none, we'll vote. Lord, please take them. Sedlin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Motion carries. On to bills and financials for head start. Any additional items to be shown?
I did put, uh, in, both any invoice and the additional head start folder for days to reference. So that you're aware of that.
You guys have a chance to look at those?
I would like some guidance from the board or if somebody could be assigned to work with me on that.
Does anybody have a chance to refer to that? The practice bill. Somebody like to help? Decide a way of talking about lighting on that?
I have you.
Okay, you okay with that?
Thank you.
Anything else on the financials for head start? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve those.
Make a motion to approve the bills and financials for head start?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there, uh, some parliaments are seconded to approve the bills and financials for head start? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any second? If there are none, we'll see the votes. Lord, please take them. Bailey?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Sedlin? Motion carries. Sorry for myself coming up here. Okay, so we'll move on to old business. First item is our school board election.
Thank you, my mate. So I did, did a call from Brenda Cunin history and she made me a poll list of people that she come from. So poll workers will not be a problem, but we have you up there. Might be more than that though. I can't make sure down there. Um, so I did upload all this into the packet, but people think that I do think it's important for the board to discuss. County poll workers are paid $12 per hour. Certainly they tell me that the county is looking at upping that rate. Currently, TCU pays poll workers $12.40 plus mileage. Uh, the current mileage rate right now is $67 per mile. So total election worker needed. We need a minimum of four per site. We need to co-recommend five. Having them inside for there. That then takes me out of the equation. Like I just need to be, uh, um, see here. And then it also, by having five in each site, that also allows me to be available and bring my, well, so the current estimated cost of an election with two sites at 10 hours. Let's say what will be averaged is 10 hours. It's about $1,240 plus mileage. I estimate $200 to mileage. So $1,416. Um, estimated cost of an election with three sites, $1,860 plus $300 mileage and an extra 100 there. So $2,160. Additional things I'd have to get. Um, like election box, additional election supplies, but add an extra $200 there for the initial setup cost, bragging back. I called around for polling, uh, locations where we could host it in Upham. Uh, the city of Upham, they don't, they didn't have a location. So she referred me to the Upham 55 plus. Um, their cost to rent was $50. I'm not sure where that location is located.
It's on Main Street, just down from Fire Hall. It's north of Fire Hall, it's a building. It is handicapped accessible as a react. That's a concern for anyone as well.
Yeah, because it does have to be, oh, it has to be handicapped accessible for the election. Um, Upham Legion Hall. And I don't, I don't really come back. When I first called him, he said it would be anywhere from $75 to $150. He said because of the network, he was like, how about 100%? It'd probably be $75. Um, he did end up calling me back and I, I'm not sure if he was talking to the board or what if they decided they'd do it to us free of charge. Um, because it's something, it's kind of fun thing to have up there and you do those for your coworkers, so that's very cool. Um, and then I did some polling columns. Like, I tried to think of everything so they could possibly, um, come up. And I tried to, you know, work through it. Our meeting use board could have a discussion. We figure out how to solve some of these problems. So having a site in Upham, it makes it more accessible to our electoral population. One of the cons, it's not, we're not going to a centralized voter system. As close, and the state doesn't give us that much. I'm not sure why they don't, um, tend to the business managers who can ask me for, but they just, they're not giving it to the school. Um, so that used to have been a concern that I think I've always probably had is multiple sites can open up to more activity. Because we don't have that centralized voter system. If we don't divide our school district into precincts. Where like, you know, if you live in this location, you have to go to Granville. If you live in this location, you have to go to Upham and so forth. You know, that opens up the people to go to multiple sites. And that's always been a concern of mine. So that's something I would like the board to discuss on how, um, we're going to try to present thought after that way. Uh, the TCU doesn't own the location in Upham. But will the Legion continue to offer the space at no cost? You know, this is something we can decide to do. Will we be able to sustain the poll workers for years to come? You know, this is something I struggle with every year, is having the poll workers. I was really happy that I got all these people, but they were pretty, I don't know. We just want to work the Upham side, so it makes me nervous. Because I have part-time, you know, random counter. So that's something I would like you guys to discuss. Um, as far as like my ads on social media and the newspaper, I had two people respond from those ads. I don't know how much to give it out there that were looking for poll workers, except for word of mouth. Like I said, um, Brenda Cunin finding all these people for me was amazing. And I truly appreciate that she did that. Last year, towner location had 274 voters. The Granville location had 128 voters. Accentee ballots received was 28 voters. The cost last year, the towner, it cost us $527.05 or $1.93 per vote. Granville, $455.82 or $3.57 per vote. Accentee was $17.64 per vote. Our six, our two, $17.64, 63 cents per vote. Um, cost of state is way up. So the accentee ballot would, you know, 68 cents per vote. And then Granville had a larger amount of mileage last year because I wasn't able to find anybody in Granville to come first. So one of my workers, actually three of my workers came from the towner area. So, um, there was that. Um, and then just some initial notes, you know, from Henry County voters. They have to go to towner to vote on that day anyway. And then the largest voter turnout that we've ever had was done mostly by accentee ballots. And that was the year COVID, um, was 721 votes cast. I guess I would give the second highest, the highest election we had was when we did the bond election, when there was like 1,200 votes cast. I didn't pull out the poll book for that exact number when I made this list, but. And then, so that was everything that I had. Like I said, I tried to, anytime I would think something, I would jot it down in that spreadsheet so that, you know, I could come back to it and think, how can we solve this? What can we do? What's the word? So.
So why do you think we have such a problem getting forward?
I think that, um, there's not as many people that stay home anymore to work. I really, I think that's a big one. Some of the people that told me are, you know, I had a lot of maybes because we didn't have an election date yet. So once we have an actual election date, that would probably change. But in my opinion, I think that is, I think, like, over the years as more people have left, back into the workforce, it was really, there's not as many people that stay home anymore. You know, that can give up like the poll worker. Because you're there for, you know, depending on what times you set the election for. You set it at 11, which is the latest we've had. They're usually there until 10:30, 11:00, 9:00, so. It's a long day for that, too. A lecture that I learned, probably my very first election. So I just use poll workers that we've used in the past. One of the election poll workers, I probably shouldn't have used because it's a, it's a core, uh, election worker out for the event. So it's a standard. Can't get in there all day.
Are we required to pay them when they do the training?
Yes.
Is that something that we do? Like, how far advanced the actors in the training for workers? It says a year of group, point out a couple days before.
I usually try to do it within the beat of the elections, so they're all fresh and under the line. You know, I'm very fortunate to bear Granville. Carly Nelson, I'm hoping I can get her again. She's out of many years. She was, you know, with, and did a pretty thorough training once before. There is, she lives on these, hopefully, and she'll live on in a time that they want. A couple years now. I'm hoping they'll get to come back. You know, that helps. But yeah, the, the training, I'll do within two weeks of the election so that everything is fresh in my mind. Because it's a lot.
How long is the training? Just, I have, I have a couple people in my, I do need to approach. Do you have a question? I was just wondering like what to tell.
Yeah, it's a, it's a couple hours. You know, with having so many new election workers, it's like, it wouldn't happen. It, you know, I could say it's two to four hours, so.
Is there a way, so with, just with your first point, but not linked to a central voter system? Could we set up, like in Google Drive or somewhere in Google, a spreadsheet to where it's an active spreadsheet, so it's updated? You know, people are, because everything's handwritten, right?
Right.
Can we have them also enter it into that? And just even a name, maybe? And so then?
And name and driver's license, go through that to Mike Johnson's.
Right, and so then people can, you know, they can double check as people are writing their stuff down and they're checking their IDs. They could search that name and driver's license number, address, whichever, to make sure that we're not, somebody's not trying to go to multiple sites. Two or three of the sites.
And I was thinking about that. And that's something that I've always been thinking that we could do. And then, because that's where it'd be nice to have that person, I need to say, because that person could be, you know, who, they're not going to be doing a lot. They're not going to be writing the poll books. They're not going to read. You know, the person can't go over to the ballot. They're not going to be scanted or anything like that about it. So they're kind of sitting there, reading this book ready to answer a question for the state, um, election book as well. So, um, you know, we could get five in each site. That, that was something I thought about. And then, yeah. Right, right, I don't think they have internet there as a legion, but that is something I don't need to add.
If you can have somebody, yeah, you do a personal hotspot on your cell phone. Plug in your cell phone, generate a hotspot, assign it to your device.
Yeah. Okay, I would call, um, if they have the internet. But I, I did think of that, too. Uh, we have to have, um, devices.
Right, which I would need to be able, I mean, pretty easy to, I don't have a Chromebook equipment. I have to be able to have those for resources for that?
Yeah.
I don't know that, if they're willing to let us use the Legion at zero cost or even, even if we had to pay the $75 or the $50 for the, the 55 plus, I don't see that as a problem. Really, either. And if it's a community election, I don't know why they would ever jack up the price on us either and make it unreasonable for us to use their space. Then the next point, I think, so now we've got names for the Upham site. We have, there are names on this. I just glanced through the list of 151, I think I added up. And what Chris said, um, you know, if there's that many people who want us to have polling sites, I think we need to give it a go. And if we need to contact some of those people to say, hey, are you willing to be a worker too? I mean, not that we're going to leave for Upham now, but.
Right.
We might be in Granville or in towner. So, you know, if you're willing to sign off on, on election things, then, you know, I hope you're willing to be able to help us to, to work, so. Did you, I guess since we're talking about the, or didn't want to just keep going for all these amendments on the salaries? Want to talk about the salary?
I think the salary would be a little more expensive for people. $60, $15. It'd be, it'd be almost $2.60 per hour. Increase, I mean, that's up 20% increase. Cost, which I mean, is still fairly minimal. I thought we spent more on the election. Increase that, I think we.
And that's the other thing, I mean, I can, we can have someone that can see the 18, uh, do the poll book. They can't, they can't handle the ballots, but they can do the poll book.
They can be a clerk.
Right, and then the 18, um, and on my list, there are a couple, um, college students that I've had in the past, so. I mean, they really, what they.
And then I guess what was your concern with accentee's or?
Okay, I, I would just, I need a clarification on, okay. So I've had a couple people talk to me in the last, since the last time you voted. But that the county ballot has a box on it that says school. So if you check that, why do they have to say the school? Accentee ballot.
So I rely on the county to forward those to me.
Yep.
So if the county didn't forward it to me, I didn't receive it.
Okay, so it's at the county, it's where we, is that?
Yeah.
Because there was, that's, I mean, that's happened.
And she is really good at forwarding them to me, so I don't know what happened there. I've had a couple people call me and they're like, I haven't received a ballot yet. I haven't received an application yet for accentee. You know, if you could just forward that to me and.
Because it, and then, I know, because then you had to go, you had to come into the school and get your absentee ballots, right?
Oh, no, okay, so like, I do, when we are about a week out because of our mail, I recommend that people come into the school because if I nail it, then you may not get it.
I might till a week to get it.
Right, and so I often recommend that you come into the school and get it at that point. I mean, I'll still put it in the mail brief, but.
Guarantee it on delivery time.
Right, I can't guarantee delivery time, so.
I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Yeah, yeah.
That the ballots have to be postmarked the day before the election?
The day.
Postmarked on the election day or can't be posted?
Right, so it has to be postmarked the day before the election. Or you can drop it off in my office the day before the election. Either, uh, it's either four or five.
The day before or the day of?
The day before.
The day before election.
We, uh, yeah, we can't, they set accentee ballots on the day of the election. At that point, you'll have to go and check it out.
And turn in your accentee ballot when you go into the school?
Right, right, and not spoil it. Right, yeah, some people just write their ballot in the upper half, but.
Okay, so any other points?
So how do we want to do that? Well, we should probably discuss dates and all that at one motion, right? Precinct polling site, date, when the hours are.
So, so you're going to set your dates of the election. And then you're going to set your precincts, um, and your polling sites. And that actually doesn't have to be done 35 days before the election. But if you are going to add Upham, otherwise it's going to head of time so that we can get it. Out as an advert time. We don't have to have the hours of, you know, I thought we had to have that in our initial, like, it was all in one.
Yeah, so you have to, latest you can open is 11. Um, and then you have to close it at 11, so.
What hours do you want?
It's not up to you really to decide.
What do we do from Friday to that? What is the?
You've done, you've done, um, you've done seven eight or no evening, 11 now? I don't remember what it was that year. It was, you've done it early and then you've done it at 11, so. But you have to open by 11.
When we opened up in those early years, we didn't even sell 7:00.
You were required by law.
Oh, oh, we are.
So no matter what time we open, we still have. Okay, so. June eleventh is the county election, correct?
Correct.
So any, eleven, um.
I think that's the date.
And the important fact, normally that's the one we've been, you know, half-resigned, half-resigned. Um. Okay, so then that would.
Do we want separate motions, like, the date?
I would do with your date, um, your date, separate, when we say polling site, that's what we. Okay, all right.
Hey, that, move, uh, they set the date, June eleventh? Election.
That's most, you say your polling site, you say your.
Yeah.
Oh.
So is there, so there's a motion to set our election date of June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, is there a second?
Oh, I'm.
So promptly moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Any discussion? There are none, we'll vote on the date of June eleventh, or we will, please say.
Macbeth?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yeah.
Sevlin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yeah.
Motion carries, okay, so now we need to have a motion to set our precincts, hours of polling sites, and the polling sites.
We start at eight, we go to seven, because there's a long day and increases our costs, but at the same time, you also lose people that are, that are heading to work and stop in.
Yeah, if you open at eight, they can maybe sacrifice their lunch at the beginning of their day at eight and seven.
So it is, so.
It is a long day and increases the.
Do they have to be, I'm pushing the workers, does it have to be the same five all day?
I've only ever had that many people going to work, so yeah, they're always getting some five. Um, I'll have to double check if they need to go down that, um, okay, I'm still there. They can't leave the building yet, I know that, but I don't think they can split off the shifts.
You know, could we do a eight till noon, or eight till one, and then, uh, one till seven, or something like that?
Yeah, I can find out more information on that, um, that I don't, we'll do the exact answer to that, so, um, and then I'll report back, um, next weekend, take that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, but we still need to, I think we set our time, and if we can split shifts, if we have enough people to split shifts, I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, we did.
They want to.
Back in their respective, I don't, a lot, if you just wanna run that along, so if you want to do that, ten to seven, we're still extending polling time.
Right, pushing them on their way home instead of on our way and making them.
Well, we have to work five. So it's like how to communicate. Aren't we?
Yeah. Any other input? And the second? Okay. Okay, so I will need a motion that states precinct of T U School District, polling sites of Towner, Granville, Uptown, we don't have to list the actual locations.
Yes, motion.
The schools and the buil- the building sites, okay? Um, to include those locations and the hours. Icons, oh yeah, it's handy, it's accessible, and. Okay, good.
Move precinct, the T U School District. Set times for ten AM to seven PM. The locations, the, you know, Thomas, you know, Thomas School, Uptown, Legion Hall, and the Granville School.
I think that's it, yeah, that's it. We've been promptly moved and seconded to have our election for the precinct of T U School District, and the polling sites of the Uptown Legion Hall, Granville School, and Towner School from seven, or ten AM to seven PM. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Very none, we'll proceed to vote, or we will, please say.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Sevlin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yeah.
Macbeth?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, that wraps up. Um, so that's what I was just gonna say, we should vote on our salary for our coworkers in a separate, so we should do that now. So. We've had fifteen, we've had sixteen thrown out.
Uh, fifteen, I think.
So, that's, I mean, I'm okay with that, yes, if you're ready to motion.
Yep.
Okay, so, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to increase the coworker's salary at fifteen-dollar a hour, and, uh, inspector to sixteen.
I'll second that.
So we promptly moved in, right, inspector, so we promptly moved and seconded to increase our coworker wages to fifteen dollars an hour, um, and the wage for the inspector to sixteen dollars an hour, is there any spec? Any discussion? Any discussion? Here are none, we'll proceed to vote, or we will, please say.
Kramer?
Yes.
Sevlin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yeah.
Macbeth?
Yes.
Johnson? Yes. Motion carries. All right, okay, who will be, this is one that I'd like to know, that, um, this year's ballot, the question of the question. So it's the, the two, uh, court members. I hope part of you. Um, and still with the election, I forgot, so when are, so we have two seats, they're open, right?
Right.
Mine and Terry's, so an at-large and the uptown seat.
Yep.
Um, what are the dates for turning in the paperwork and everything for that then, is that on here, right?
Yeah, so your deadline to have your name put on the ballot is April eighth. So Monday.
And those papers can be found at both locations?
They will be. And then, yeah, it has to, it has to be published in the paper by March, uh, I have to have it sent in by March sixth. So, yes. You know, there's been our paper deadline. Has to be published in the paper.
The, the one, the dates of the election.
No, the deadline for ten.
Oh.
Has to be published by then.
Okay. Right, so that's kind of. Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on the election questions, comments, concerns? Okay, we can move on to, and we are playground fence.
Hey, I did get this back, uh, May last week, and you opened up a proposal, there are, there are four different options in there. Four-foot option and six-foot option for Towner School, and a four-foot option, six-foot option, Granville School. By and large, the scope of the project is very similar to what it was originally, um, slight variation on Granville site, the fence actually runs all the way back to where the trees are, and then kind of terminates the property line back here at this point, and then in the Granville or the Towner Schools, um, we're no longer having a fence run across the front of the school.
Okay, any other questions on that? Or comments on which, where do you want to go, what, four-foot terms? Or one, I don't know, I guess. And this all doesn't include labor, right?
Yep, this is.
This is install.
Yep, this is your install. You couldn't do this, but, well, with labor. I guess I can ask.
Forgot that he was supposed to include a breakout, labor. So, um. I would like to.
I would like to see him break it, because they break it very long before, I, I just like to. I guess my feeling on it is, is this is not that complicated a project, and I just would like to see what is, can you possibly do it? You know, some kind of, like, we do the deal, possibly, with the area, you know, if it's, I mean, it's not, not building.
And it's not a pressing thing where we're gonna be breaking ground with the government anyway, so.
No, well, it's around us more than.
Yeah. That's good, but. Who knows what, two weeks over, and so, um.
That's, just remind me of the, this could, I, I would not believe, hold on, see that.
Oh.
Then, like.
Sure, okay.
One, you were actually more interested in material, right?
I'd like to see what, what.
I get that, I get you on the breakout.
Yep, yep, yep.
If I were to go, if I were to be going, just double check the.
Yep, yep. Yes, yep.
Yeah.
So are any other actions you guys want to be taking on that? Or other questions? Okay, move on to our new business. Start with our Granville student trip.
Senior's before you start.
You did, you guys saw it yet? Right? All right.
So, um, so you guys have heard, like, we're looking and going on the trip, the locations, the dates, um, all those people that would be going are advised, as everyone's on the paper in front of you, and we just wanted to present to you what we, um, wanted to.
So I will start off, I am up on the strip. Um, we have raised all the funds in our class by ourselves, from multiple fundraisers. We have proven ourselves to be responsible and hardworking students in and outside of school. We, as a class, have been sitting together calculating our budget, conducting surveys, and contacting other schools, preparing for the trip. And this is most likely our last chance for our classes to spend time together before we graduate, and possibly encompass each other as a whole.
So some people will be describing the fundraisers made for this.
Okay, so we're a big class, or we, we like to fundraise for things, we just have that, that class for a long time. Um, we participated in Penny Wars, which was probably, probably our biggest fundraiser, it gives us a lot of money. Um, we did concessions at Granville and Towner Games, our Granville games, we do, like, all the Granville games are happening here, we have, like, all the concessions for that. Um, and then we did cookies for Valentine's Day, and we do period cart, and period cart is all year round, we started it last year, and we've done it all year round, so. Um, the things that they have taught us is how to work as a team, and get all the materials prepared for fundraisers, so like, preparing, like, all the jars for Penny Wars, and counting all the money for Penny Wars, um, counting money for concessions, figuring out materials for concessions, and period cart and all that stuff. Um, we've had to keep inventory of our period cart concessions in, filling what, we are low on what we need before each game, before, like, school, all that stuff. Um, we've done a prof- profit analysis to determine cost and sales prices for many of the items we sold to maintain a profitable fundraiser. So period cart, like, we get, like, the little period cuts, and we've, like, had to budget on how much we need to sell that for to make profit off of that. Um, we have learned time management by completing schoolwork at the same time as completing fundraisers, so like, a lot of these fundraisers are going on at the same time, like, school, it's like period cart, we have to maintain that throughout school, while also maintaining our schoolwork, Penny Wars, same thing, during homecoming weeks, like, very hectic, and we still have to make sure we're maintaining that. Um, we've also had to learn how to use each other's strengths to our advantage, and know that everyone can help, so like, just picking up the slack if someone else may be struggling, like, if someone is at basketball practice, volleyball practice, things like that, the other classmates who don't participate in those sports know that, like, they have to step up and do concessions, and things like that. Um, we've had to learn how to communicate with each other and work effectively, so that our fundraiser maintains its success. I'm also going to talk to you about our parent permission form that we'd be sending out, so, we'd send permission slips with students, for, with students and parents to sign. All permission slips must be assigned and returned to Ms. Coop. If parents agree that students can attend the trip, they'll start making first purchases for our motels, our flights, everything like that, which will help us a lot with our budget. Um, if students agree that the student cannot attend the trip, then that is like their decision, we respect their decision, and they, we understand that they will not be able to travel with us as a class. Um, the class will be planning a fun day in Minot at a later date to be inclusive for the students that did not get to go. Antonio, will we talk in, oh, also, the parent permission form is in your booklet thing, so if you want to look at that. There is the pages. Um, Antonio is going to talk about past senior trips that have happened.
Okay, so in the past, for the senior trips, class of two thousand and twenty-three, uh, went to Planet Pizza in the Dakota Square Mall in, uh, Minot for the Granville class, and Towner went to Parkville. Uh, the class of two thousand and twenty-two, uh, Granville went to Lake, Lake Medagoshia and stayed at the hotel then, uh, they, uh, went kayaking and did the high ropes course or what have you. Uh, the class of two thousand and twenty-one, uh, went to Splashdown and stayed at the sleep-in, they also did an escape room and went to Planet Pizza that day. Uh, the class of two thousand and nineteen went to Lake Medagoshia and stayed at the hotel there as well, and they also did the high, high ropes course and went kayaking. Um, for other schools, our class, uh, reached out to neighbor, neighboring schools to hear what they do and have done for their senior trips. Uh, the results of the survey are included in the packet if you want to look over those. Now, as far as educational value goes, uh, there's a lot of, uh, real life experiences to be, to be gained here. Uh, for traveling, I mean, most of us, I mean, a couple of us have left to stay before, but, uh, if you want something to say, but, you know, I think a couple, a couple of us have, I don't know, passed the midlife or what, whatever, but, uh, you know, this, you know, largely shitty too, that's also another, you know, big thing, you know, experience, and social and cultural differences. Um, that's a very, very huge thing, especially, you know, all grown up in the world of Granville. Uh, and, you know, compromise is another big thing we've learned here, you know, agreeing on things as a class, what we want to do for, for our senior trip. It is important to learn, learn, and know over time, that if you put work in, you can achieve, and that's something we want to set for the previous classes, for. And that's something we want to set further than the previous classes or classes that go below, so. Um, you know, we, we've all taken the time to learn. We've, like, planned this trip for, for months now, maybe going back to our junior class. Um, we, we alone just think that's very educational. Learned, we've learned how to plan, budget, to price everything, everything we can. Um, we have researched and unpacked the business proposals that we, so we have collaborated to write this proposal together as a class. This taught us how to work as a team, as a shared, as a shared goal. Uh, this trip will also prepare us for the walk. I mean, it will allow us to gain many new perspectives, experience by observing, give it social and cultural presence. Some of us, it's going to be our final chance to travel partly on our own.
Okay, so the big thing is the what, right, the money service. Um, so the money is coming from, like Sophie mentioned, what we fundraised, um, in our class. Instead of fundraising, we weren't fundraising for a big senior trip, we were fundraising for prom. When it came down to prom, Towner had no money, so we had to limit how much we spent on prom and that, so we could keep that, um, cost split in half between the two schools, which left us with a, with a bunch of extra money. We have already paid for our caps and gowns, diplomas, everything we need for graduation. Well, for the most part, we're good. But we have set aside money for that. We are not, um, we are leaving ourselves money for graduation. Um, so, the big cost would be covered by the class flights, hotels, all that kind of stuff. Um, where it's gonna come, which we, from students, parents, um, some meals, uh, that's how it's always been when I travel with FFA's, meals are on the student as well as any souvenirs that they would like to purchase. Um, we, as far as what we're gonna do on the trip, we are gonna keep those in our, our set budget. Um, and then if needed, the students could pay the cost of the flight and then that cost of the flight could be returned to the student, um, if we have everything covered. Um, as you see, if you, like, you have two different dates with two different budgets. Um, one is, um, just, yeah, one is a Friday to a Monday, one's a Monday to a Friday. Um, it's one of the one direct plate. Um, keep in mind that flight prices do change a little bit. These are the prices from yesterday, they have, um, fluctuated a little bit. One of them went up, one of them went down. Um, so there's two different budgets. But, um, other than that, we are, that's all we got, we're open. Any questions you guys have for us? Our advisors are here too, if you have questions to ask.
I'm assuming your advisors are onboard.
Yes, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Double check. Just like seniors just rope them in, like, hey, you should go on.
No, we work hard too.
Questions?
What types of things are, like, have you guys looked at what types of excursions you guys would possibly be doing?
We have looked at a little bit. One of the things we want to do, the big thing we want to do, we had to get rid of because it was too expensive, so. Um, but other than that, we're looking at kind of things you can do down there, um.
One of them was like an airboat ride.
Yeah, we looked at airboat ride, we looked at, like, there's this place that has, like, a, it's kind of like, I don't even know what you call it. We do, like, a bunch of interactive things, I don't know, like, fun go-kart stuff. We are gonna try and include some things that are educational, uh, sciency type stuff. There's a lot you can do down there. We haven't looked exactly yet, um, at what we're waiting for, first approval from you guys, next booking flights, playing with our money from there.
What's the total balance of funds you guys have paid?
You see, that, we don't know exactly. Ms. Coop was supposed to hit that.
They currently have five thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. So, you know, even at the more expensive budget, that's leaving them a thousand dollars in their account.
And like, but we.
You usually want, well, most classes don't pay for their cap gallons out of their class funds. Students pay for those on their own. Um, they actually haven't paid for anything for their actual graduation yet. And so, like, your valedictorian award, your salutatorian, North Coast entry code doesn't allow us to pay for those out of general fund. So that has to come out of class fund. So all of those things.
Yep, I have a lovely laser breaker that can make flats, uh, some of that was going to be used for.
Yep, those words. But, but you still have money to pay for the supply. So, um, you know, those kinds of things will have to. I usually tell the classes when they ask me how much to budget for their, um, graduation, I say about six hundred dollars.
Then you have to first.
Grandville is usually.
Lot, lot.
They don't, they don't.
Yeah. Not as expensive as Towner.
I mean, I think we already paid for caps and gowns. Nope, that's not what I'm talking about.
Oh, not yet, nope, nope.
Most classes don't even pay for their, like, caps and gowns out of their class budget.
Okay.
Yep, this is the actual graduation. So you have to, anything involved with graduation comes out of the senior cost budget because Central Court doesn't allow us to pay for those kinds of things with general fund budgets.
Yep.
How to expend it all?
I knew, um, there was one question that I asked that I thought you actually had a pretty good answer for. Um, so I was concerned that this would set a precedent for future classes. So I'm just gonna reiterate the question, but I did appreciate what you responded for. Now that I've answered, I hope you remember what you said.
Um, so he asked us about setting a precedent for the younger classes, showing the younger classes that, yeah, we're going on this trip, what about them? Um, he asked us about them skipping on, skimping on prom to do a trip. Um, I guess the way I answered it was, that's our goal. We want to set precedent for the younger classes. A lot of them have gained the mentality of, we're not gonna do it because why should we? Um, and we want to show them that if you do put in the work, if you do keep up with your schoolwork, if you do get good grades, if you do fundraise and take the time to do that, then you can do things like this. Obviously, the skimping on prom, that comes down to their advisors too, like, you need to do this stuff. This is how it works for their advisors to guide them through all that. But as far as setting a precedent, it's kind of what we want to do.
Good answer. I, I don't have a problem with them going. When I was a senior, we took fine arts trip. Our juniors and seniors did to, um, Winnipeg. We went to the opera, we went to, um, the, I can't even remember all of them, spaghetti factory, like, all of a bunch of different things in Winnipeg. So, we went across international lines, not just. A flight. Yes, Terry, it was a long time ago. We also had to put in the work to be able to make it happen. And I appreciate your guys' hard work and being able to earn this for yourselves. I don't have a problem with it.
I think it's awesome. I went on several mission trips in high school to Chicago and various other places and went to nationals for FFA and every single trip was a learning experience and I always thought it was wonderful. My, are you asking us which dates we prefer based on your budgets or is that something that?
It kind of depends, the, there are two different, so one is a Monday to a Friday, that would, we would miss the week of school.
Yeah, that was my only concern.
The other one is Friday to a Monday. Our, our only options are to fly Fridays and Mondays with the flights. Um, but it's a, if you guys are okay with us missing school, and I know from a student standpoint that our class is really good at getting their work done, so I don't think this new school would be a problem for us, but.
Not to brag.
Yeah, our senior classes are taking mostly college classes, so like, we, it's mostly like on our own.
It's online.
It's online, we go on our own time.
We do it on our.
But is that all of you? Is all of you?
Yeah, all of us take online classes.
Yep. Yep. None of us are in any classes that would be too complicated.
Mythical class is a learning experience.
You're so.
That's a, that's a much longer time ago than that. Let's not go back that far.
So, I guess, I don't, do, what are your, does that, do you want to set the date for them if we so decide to let, to approve of it? Or do you want to let them choose and?
I think we approve it.
Let them take it from there. Okay? Do you want to make a motion on, on Grandville? Okay?
I'll make the motion to.
Is there a second? Terry, there's been a motion to approve the TGU Grandville senior trip to Florida and it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Any discussions? Any discussion? Very well received. Hope, Lori, please say yes. Sedlin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yeah.
Macbeth?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
See, you were excited with the advisors.
I would love to say, very good work on giving up here and presenting to us. I mean, it's not always easy to talk in front of adults and ones that you probably don't know so great, but good work.
And do more.
I'm impressed.
Thank you.
Move on to our next item, a Pet Start grant. I really don't want to follow that.
Great job, good job. Um, this isn't an actual new grant, this is requesting for carryover dollars of our existing grant. We have about a hundred and five thousand dollars, well, exactly a hundred and five thousand dollars left. And the projects, we have about four projects that we need to finish that we cannot do in the ninety-day timeline. Um, one of them being carpets, we purchased carpet for Grandville, or for, uh, Towner and Rugby and that cannot be put in until April. Um, we are hiring a new nurse and I have training for the new nurse. Um, let me see, lead water, lead and paint testing and lead water testing, that's something new that came up during our review. I'm waiting for two bids on that. I have no idea what that's gonna cost. Um, I'm probably thinking somewhere around ten thousand dollars. So, that's something that we have to do. Hopefully, I'm completely wrong, but I should have those by Friday. And then the remainder of the dollars would be to update our playground in Devil's Lake. So, this would just be requesting to, I'm asking for permission to, um, write for carryover.
Any questions for our listen on that? Was that an intermission?
I'll make a motion to, to write for the carryover grant.
So, properly moved and seconded to, um, approve the writing of the continual grant. Um, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Or none, we will proceed, Lori, please say yes. Writing it down. Thank you. Okay, Bailey?
Yeah.
Macbeth?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Sedlin?
Yeah.
Motion carries. I can see open enrollments.
We have an open enrollment, it's all approved. All these, that's incoming next fall. That is.
Any questions or comments on those? Not, I would entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, done. Uh, so properly moved and seconded to approve the open enrollment request for fall of twenty-four and the two tuition agreements that we have received, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Very none, we'll proceed to vote, Lori, please say yes. Macbeth?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Sedlin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yeah.
Motion carries. On to our teacher contract in your file.
I make a motion to approve the teacher contract, just to confirm.
Is there a second?
Okay.
So, I'm properly moved and seconded to approve the teacher contract, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Very none, we'll proceed to vote, Lori, please say yes. Johnson?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Sedlin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yeah.
Macbeth?
Yes.
Motion carries. On to district vehicle fleets.
So I do have the list of our vehicles, one by the district, on that spreadsheet, up to a mileage. And there are two highlighted vehicles you'll notice on that list. One is a oh-eight school bus, and there's an oh-nine school bus, both are international. And, um, the mileage, both are high mileage. Friends, I ask, recommend, actually, we're both in those two. It's time. Otherwise, our fleet vehicles right now is pretty good shape, running very well. Um, and if you look at a couple of the other buses, specifically the Thomas's that are higher mileage, one's actually two oh-five seven eleven, um, two hundred and five thousand miles on it. That's actually the bus that drives every day. And, uh, he's told me that his preference would be to actually do R and R on the engine. If that vehicle starts to have a problem, I'd purchase a new vehicle. Um, and for two reasons, A, he really appreciates that particular model of school bus. And second is the overall cost of the investment, so he'd be looking at around, between one fifteen and one thirty, but he actually got a bus to live in. Which is significantly increased from the last time he purchased a school.
And none of ours qualified for the grant that we used for our last purchase.
So, the two buses that would be replaced right now would technically qualify, however, those buses are not currently available. And it needs to be a bus that's currently being used as a million dollar, uh, bus qualified.
On Clem's bus, is it the engine transmission?
Clem's bus isn't having a problem.
Clem's bus, why are you just saying a point reference that that would be his preference? So, did he figure out what cost it would be? Uh, when we spoke about it, all in passing. And that's really, you know, for example, that would be a problem.
So the, the two highlighted buses are not currently route buses and. Right, so what would our move of keeping rid of them?
Well, we put them up for sale, uh, start there. Especially when you have, you know, the high, high pressure oil pump. So that's the engine right there. Almost just a scrap. We have two, uh, oh-eights. So, the. Because of our insurance, we had, fought that a lot. A lot of problems that were happening lately, um, we started.
So are you just looking, are you just looking for recommendations?
Um.
To get bids on those?
Well, if you'd like, we've got a couple options, if you'd like, we could put those two highlighted vehicles up for sale. Um, the other thing is kind of an FYI piece is one of those, where we're at, um, overall district.
Oh, so it's not, we don't need to replace?
No.
They're not one of those, Terry, like, we need to get rid of them.
Oh.
And so do we.
The other thing that I guess I would have you to make note of, uh, our passenger vehicles, mileage relatively low on most of those, with the exception of, you know, the Yukon, um, that's one of the little bit. The Expedition's also being a little bit up. The Dodge Caravan, you'll notice, has a hundred fifty-five thousand miles. That is only utilized by our staff members who can do that. That's your mechanic being inclined, that's not right.
I don't have a problem with doing those buses that aren't usable for us anyway.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
So I'm currently moved and seconded to put up the two highlighted school buses up for sale. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Are we just going to let him decide a asking price?
We'll probably put it up on the days.
Okay. Any other discussion? Very none, we'll proceed to vote. Lori, please say vote. Kramer?
Yes.
Sedlin?
Yes.
Bailey? Macbeth?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Did you want anything else? Hey, we will move on to the use of AI in the classroom. It becomes a bit of a issue with having kids have AI in their homework for them, like their papers for them. Usually, our classroom teachers have policies on that. But do we, as board, have a school-wide policy on that? Basically, we wanted to start that conversation, I guess.
I think this is a couple of teachers, you know, kind of like the article Eric put in there. A basic firm policy around it, I think, probably the best. I mean, I, if teachers are doing a lesson plan using AI, and they want to use that as part of the lesson, to use it as a tool, to feel the dangers of it, like I fully recommend you do it. But otherwise, at least for these, with the teachers and setting expectations, I think, that either in our plagiarism or somewhere in our technology policy, we should have something that prohibits the use of AI when completing schoolwork, especially if it's not used as a tool, if that's a specific question.
I meant to look if, not to say schoolwork association has any kind of policy or included that in anywhere, but.
They do not. But I will add that it's, we're going through our business service administrators. Newtown provided, again, plagiarism, it's not a policy, it's in their handbook. We just have a whole section on plagiarism and academic dishonesty, which we'd be happy to share with you guys. Essentially, it's just setting out expectations.
Does that, doesn't mind that thought, it's plagiarism.
You're right.
It needs to be some kind of function. Is that like the AI? It doesn't, doesn't reference any of its sources inside of the document. You have no idea what students say, and basic information. Writes a paper or completes a project and like they don't have any sources of site that you ask them about it. Where'd you get this? You're very blank stare.
But I think too, that's one of our benefits of being small schools and having small class sizes is our teachers know how our students write and prepare papers and they can call out right away, this is not your work. You've never written like this before. So, but I, I think we do need to include it somewhere. Either in the handbook or, or in our parent's book. But it was just a kind of an informational thing of.
Yeah, we don't have to have a motion on this night. I just wanted people to maybe think about it. They would, bored to think about it and maybe work on this, especially. It's kind of hard to really implement something full force this year, but at least have something in the handbook for students by next year.
So we're all kind of aware of that.
I mean, teachers have already made, or set expectations of parents. And maybe we need to look for some input from some of those teachers on how they have their policy set forth and kind of what they expect in their lesson plans regarding the use of that type of technology.
Anything else on that? Okay, we can move on to our superintendent evaluation. That is due at next month's meeting, so I will go email that to our superintendent. So I did update it for our discussion of our last, our last evaluation to have you include comments on your ratings. So that it wasn't just if you gave a low rating that you needed to comment, but to include comments for all your ratings. So otherwise, I will, I will get that sent out and I'll, in the email, I'll let you know when I need to have it back by, depending on when we set our next meeting for. But I usually try to have it by like Thursday of the week before, so I have time to compile all of them.
We have to have those in before the fifteenth, the next one break, or that has to be approved by the board before the fifteenth.
Uh, any other questions or comments on that? Okay, we can move on to Ty. We moved you up for your weight room discussion or comments.
I guess me and Mr. Sweet were talking about that. I had, I had a student approach me about, worried about the age, age restriction and worried about he himself and other students not being able to use it because of the age restriction. So he come up to me and asked me if I could do something about it. And I, I guess we found this reference from Harvey. And the old restriction was that if you're under eighteen, you need someone over eighteen to go with you. And simply Harvey's, what we found in Harvey's was if, if you are over sixteen, you can be in there with another buddy that's over sixteen, them by themselves. They don't need a person over eighteen. It just pretty much allows those older, more responsible juniors and seniors to be in there. But that would then adult and give them more chance to get in there. And gives them their, but if they are under sixteen, they need someone older than eighteen. So those majority people lifting in the weight room, like juniors and seniors for sports, they can go in there with a classmate or someone else and lift instead of having their parent or older brother out of that high school come in or something. Just another thought there. That's what that guy with, that student was worried about and wanted to come fix or see if I could do anything about it.
Okay. Any comments about all that? I think some who I don't have a problem with it, they should be responsible enough as sixteen-year-olds to be able to.
Where somebody's in, is there, doesn't matter if they're fifty or sixteen, they're going to do something properly.
Yep.
Because the biggest thing with that is I like the partner thing, because if they're lifting.
Yeah, they need someone in there to.
Use fire.
So is that something that's already in policy? Is that part of the student handbook? So when we did that, we used the family class ball, it's saved there.
Okay.
It'd be supervised by an adult who's under eighteen. So we would like more to approve Ty's new plan of sixteen and older being in there, pumping out everybody to supervise.
But if you're under sixteen, you need someone over eighteen.
You need someone over eighteen, yep. Is there a second?
I don't know.
Okay, so currently moved and seconded to update our policy on weight room usage to change the ages to sixteen, as long as there is another person in there the age of sixteen and over. If you are under sixteen, you need someone eighteen and over to be there with you. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Very none, we'll proceed to vote. Lori, please say vote. Bailey?
Yeah.
Macbeth?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Sedlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, we will move on to reports. So first off is Towner and Granville's district school board members. Want to speak? Ty can go first.
Since the last board meeting, we had a few things going on, like the North Dakota High Schools Activities Association presentation, sportsman presentation, it's for seventh through twelve. It was about things like no negative chants at basketball games and also respect the opponents and courtesy to the opponent's team about standing for their school song and our own school song and just respectful stuff. And then there is some discussion on doing it for younger kids for fourth or sixth because as these themes are getting further in regionals, there is more younger kids coming and getting involved and supporting the girls. And the girls won the district championship. And then there's a lot more kid, younger kids, good way to get started on the respectful sportsmanship and starting them so they grow up to be good. And then some of the upcoming activities next week is FFA week, girls' regionals, boys' districts. And then, um, then all this other stuff is like Mr. Sweet on the new weight room stuff. And that's about it. Other than that, everything's going good.
Awesome, thanks. Bringing that forward tonight is the perfect reason why we created your position, your guys' position, so. Cars?
All right, so we also had that class meeting today. And just to do a quick collaboration, I do think it's something important to have a teaching that to our younger kids as well. Um, I was definitely one of those kids that would yell at my mom when she wasn't being very nice at sports teams. So I think it's important that we're teaching not only our high school students, but just every age to stay calm and not go crazy. As far as the rest of school goes, we have our science luncheon signed up and date set, which is very exciting. I really like participating in it and I think we've done a pretty good job at advocating that to our younger seventh and eighth graders as to why they should join and be a part of extracurriculars. Um, I did want to talk about our new librarian because from what I have heard from my little kiddo that I watch, he absolutely adores her and loves going to library every Tuesday and Thursday. And then lastly, our next break is coming up. I think that's a good time to catch up on any work that we do have missing or need to work on, especially as our assignments seem to be getting bigger as the school year comes to an end, or maybe it just feels that way. And yeah, and that's about it. It's been pretty good so far. We've had some success and been a pretty good year.
Move on to your superintendent's report.
Well, just a couple of extra information items. The school board training, the b-legged area training, if we get some solid dates on that before you guys. It'll be March twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. I don't have a location right now. I'm hoping that it will be local. So either it's at, in Granville or possibly all, we have to meet with the trainers. I don't think I'll tell them for twenty-second of February, and then we'll kind of reach a final location at that point. We do have the dates ready. Just draw your attention to the report that Mr. Marcus had put into the folder for athletics this month. Other than that. That's all I really have for this. Congratulations to the girls' women's tournament. That's very exciting. Always an exciting time of year, the playoff season.
Moving on to Mr. Sweet. Okay, we can move on to Towner High School and Elementary.
Start with elementary?
What's that?
We start with elementary.
Sure.
He's writing it currently.
No, uh, Nicole should be submitted, so if you have any questions, hurry, you can let her know by email. But it's been a busy month. I've had a lot of students going to a variety of different places. Just a couple of things I'll highlight. We had a unique opportunity to send some of our Titan lead and student council students to University of North Dakota. To listen to Kevin O'Leary from Shark Tank present on entrepreneurship and business in the state of North Dakota. So it's nice that we were able to use some of the connections that we have to get students tickets to get into that. It's February sixth. Granville and Towner juniors took place in the practice ACT exam. Give them a pretty good understanding of where they're at. And we will use that to tailor their instruction leading up to our actual ACT exam, which is scheduled for March twelfth. Our students in Towner are meeting weekly on Fridays, using some of these results that they got from these tests that they took to improve their skills in those content areas. And then they can go back into this website, Sylvin, edit their answers, and it'll rescore it so they can see how they can improve on their ACT exam. So it kind of gave us an idea, snapshot. English reading, we're doing pretty good. Math, an area we can catch up on, but just excited to see that. And then with our ACT prep that we're doing weekly, we've opened them up to sophomores for next year. So we have some sophomores that are currently taking place, or taking part in these ACT prep lessons that will roll into next year's, so that they have a head start for that. Yeah, the only other thing I would add, this came out today, but both ours and Granville's student nominations for the academic all state received, honorary mention for that. For Towner, it's Sidney Shook.
Ryan Love.
Ryan Love. So congratulations to both of them. Let's see their way for qualifying for that. That'll open up. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Kelly? Thank you. Mrs. Wells, you're up.
Hi, everyone. So I will piggyback off of the practice ACT during Titan time on Wednesdays. We'll have the practice ACT as well. Our sophomores are definitely interested. So that's exciting that they want to start early to prepare for that exam. A lot of field trips going on, which is great. Science, and that's the Science Over the House with Mrs. Brant right here. Ashley Bogmeyer was recognized by the Assistant Supervisor of Agriculture Education in North Dakota. She at random sent an email to Mr. Sweet and me commending Ashley for going above and beyond her call of duty as a teacher, but how much she participates at the, at a national athletic convention. So we're proud of Ashley on that, definitely. Something that we want to focus on, I'm going to go to the sportsmanship. Is we did include our fourth, fifth, and sixth graders in the sportsmanship presentation due to the fact that they do have girls' elementary basketball and boys' elementary basketball. And they were well behaved as, as expected. We have started a new instructional approach called No Titan Left Behind. I mentioned it last month saying that we were going to implement it. Paul Illey, a sixth grader, came up with the name. It is under the guidance of Erin Abberley, our school counselor, and Mary Ann Wall, our music teacher. And every day at two forty PM, they gather students that have missing assignments. And over ten school days, a hundred and nineteen missing assignments have been completed. A hundred and nineteen missing assignments have been completed because we want the culture to be, our students are learning. We don't want to give them the option to pick and choose what assignments they're going to do or not. Everything is important if our teachers are preparing and our paraprofessionals are preparing. So we look forward to that. Our sixth grade teacher Julie Messrude asked me today if she would be able to send some of the sixth graders over a couple of times a week to see if they can work on missing assignments and learn from their peers and role models. And I said absolutely. So we do expect a couple of sixth graders on Thursday. On Thursday. So we're really, really excited about No Titan Left Behind. We call it NTLB for short. And then another thing that we're pushing is our new motto is seven point four will help you even more. About seven point four hours of pre-tutoring every single week here in our school by teachers and staff. Even Mrs. Tonason, our school secretary, is helping students. They come into the front office and ask her. They ask me, they're asking Erin Abberley, our school counselor. So before school, during Titan time, and after school, just trying to push the learning and learning and learning. And everything else appears to be great.
Yeah. Any questions for Ms. Wilson? Thank you. So the only thing left is to set our next meeting dates. I even looked, I'm like, oh yeah, I got hits for you yet and.
I have my report in there. I know you have, get a lot of information before your meetings. There's a lot of information in my report this month, so if you could take some time to look it over, we have some big unfunded mandates that are coming forward that we will be looking at in the next year. We're getting ready to go into strategic planning, so lots and lots of information in that report, so please take some time to look at it and forward me or give me a call with any questions. It'll continue to be something I talk about between now and probably October.
Okay. Now we can set our next meeting dates. Um, so we are in Lent. Technically, our meeting would be Wednesday thirteenth, which would be the second Wednesday. Is that very much, was that a problem? Do we need to put a different date? There is no school on fourteenth or fifteenth or eighteenth or nineteenth. And the TGU talent show is in Granville on the eleventh. Is that night?
Are there any school activities over the course? Um, I don't know. Well, boys state basketball tournament, I would anticipate, um, I don't know, I guess, I think we'll probably have a lot of implications goes and, I, um, and I myself would be going a bit, just Friday. I don't think we have a Monday.
Monday the eleventh? I mean, you know, time word? Yeah. How much time do we have? What time is that? I think it's about six. Lisa just told me the time, she just gave me the time. And.
Well, we've got the talent show here.
What time is the talent show? Six thirty?
Six thirty.
Six thirty? Yes.
And that's in Granville, the talent.
Sure. So we can't just take that on. Well, do you guys have a schedule? Are you ready? No? Mr. Doherty? Aren't you there?
Yeah. I'll let you miss.
I thought it was six thirty-seven.
Six thirty-seven. I mean, I didn't make it work by half, but just, you guys are initially impacted.
I'm gonna do laptops, I can work from home like really, really easy. Like my laptop, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm super set. I'll be good to actually turn it around. Just kidding.
Five thirty?
Yeah, that's where I'm at, cause I know I'll probably have appointments that week, that will be the deadline for partners, that's preparation, which is on fifteen. So I can't, so.
Is your afterthought meeting in Towner? Yeah. So, so we can go at five thirty and you can just roll into another meeting right after. That works? Five thirty on March eleventh? In Towner. Okay, uh, there is no other business, so I have a motion for adjournment.
Come on.
Second. All right, you're adjourned, thank you. Reminder, if you have not signed in on the sheet that's on the table by the door, please do so before you leave.
You signed in then?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I asked some questions about your vote regarding the bus and the election.
Uh, sure. I'm leaving though.
Um, so is there, did you wanna set up a different time or place?
No, that's fine. This, this doesn't, you can walk with it if you'd like, still it's.
Well, my stuff's back here. I don't want anyone tampering with my stuff.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, hold on a minute, uh, let me, pray to God they won't mess with my jacket. Um, it's just that I know that lady in the red, uh, has to do with the actual polls and the voting, so I don't wanna miss her. She had some good points about counting, uh, ballots at the same night, but that prevents tampering.
But yeah, gotta pay. And then, well, I can't, just whatever, let me know for the things. Otherwise, I just have to sit here and play with the settings and do those to check it off. Okay. But it's all the software and I'm not. I'll, I'll keep them, I'll put them in file.
Ma'am, you do the polls in McHenry County, right?
The polling sites?
Yeah, you were talking about the election stuff and I noticed that you were getting a lot of input about the polling sites and the other things. I'm face blind, so part of the reason I have to have the cameras, it's an adaptive device. But, um, I'm, didn't I run into you during the city hall, uh, city hall, city council meetings?
What are you wondering?
A whole bunch of stuff. Um, were you the one I talked to about, um, how you had mostly utterly polling workers and you were concerned about the requirements in the, um, eh, eh, the proposed, uh, men, voter initiative to, uh, make it so that we had to count out ballots, I mean, not we, but the, uh, poll watchers had to count out the ballots in the same night.
Eh, that's a requirement. We, we don't have electronic, um, voter things in our school district, so, um, the poll workers at closing time at seven o'clock, anybody that's still in line at seven o'clock, if you're in line at seven o'clock to vote, you still get to vote. Okay? Once that's, you know, they'll, but they, the cutoff is seven PM. Okay? Then once everybody has voted, then those poll workers will then count the ballots that night. And then thirteen days after the election, the school board will meet and then they will certify the election results. And at that time, they'll count any additional absentee ballots that were to come in.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, but, um, did you do polling for anything beyond the TGU?
We don't do polling. The polling sites are like the voter sites. We don't do polling, like, like what you're talking about, like in a national, like presidential election, would they poll people? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, everybody thinks about presidential, but there's also the city, there's also the city council, the county board, there's the state representatives.
I don't have anything to do with those. So I'm only the school district business manager, so I only have anything to do with the school district election. Um, I don't know if when you're referring to polling, you're referring to like, in a, I'm using a presidential election as an example where they do polls, you know, to see percentages of, you know.
Well, that's what most of the public thinks. They don't wanna think beyond presidential, cause that's what's exclusively in the news.
But I, I'm, just use that as an example when I'm referring to polling. But this is strictly school elections, so.
Well, school's starting to become more and more important.
School's always been important, ma'am, in my opinion.
Well, it always has, but especially now. Um, I don't even wanna get into it, but there's, I mean, I can remember when I was standing with a whole bunch of moms about our right to not have those, um, jabs forced on us and, uh, one of the guys I was standing next to told me he was Homeland Security and he was there to supervise us as, uh, eh, we were observing the vote at the state capitol.
Um, yep, no, you can come and observe the counting. You absolutely can. We'll have a section locked off for you, where that's your right. You can, you can observe that. Yeah, absolutely.
You mean the polls?
The voting? Yeah, you can observe that. You can obvert, observe any part of the election process.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I, I hope broke loose, cause I tried to just observe another school board, but anyways, I'm gonna shut up about it.
I'm not the other school board, so I can't speak to that.
Yeah, I appreciate it, because yes, I, I would like to observe it as long as I'm complying with the rules.
Go home, so I'm.
Oh, you're being paid?
I am a paid, I am a paid employee of the school district, yes.
Um, is there a way I could, eh, ask more, if I could arrange to interview you again? Cause elections are a big deal.
Absolutely. I won't speak, um, I won't give my personal opinions, but you can ask me any, for any public information, um, that you would like and I can get that for you, absolutely.
Well, I'd like to get as much as possible up because any election's important, but it's like you said, these have never had.
Well, everything that you saw tonight, that's everything that I know for this election, so.
Yeah.
Thus far.
Yeah.
I actually have to go though?
Yes, you do, thank you.
That sounds about right. See ya.
I'll show you that later, Lori. Yes, thank you. And I appreciate you doing that for me, too.
It is a ton of fun trying to put a scarf through one-handed. I did wanna make some quick observations. While there's not many of those rainbows that have come to represent a very immoral thing, one of the things I did talk with the assistant principal about during the Christmas thing was about how there were some people, groups, veterans against the war that were trying to get to schools and do educational things for the students. A lot of these people that do this stuff are fathers themselves or mothers. I just wanted to point that out. It's good to have the patriotic stuff. As a matter of fact, as a kid, I would've been thrilled. Anti-war was a prevailing opinion and a brutal one. Um, the other things that I wanna do is go ahead and record the security cameras. There's another one up behind the projector, right there. And I wanna go ahead and there is one rainbow thing in here, which is sandwiched between the bookshelves. And it hits perfectly legitimate. I actually wanted my sister's kids to go here before this started. Holy cow, they are that bigoted over an old maid reporter that uses a camera as an adaptive device. Not one thing points to school hours or office access. You made a mistake, apologize. If you're thankful, show it. If you're confused, ask questions. You learn, if you learn something, teach others. If you're stuck, ask for help. If you're wrong, fess up. If you love someone, tell them. If you get a trip, eh, if you trip, get back up. If somebody needs help, help them. If you see wrong, take a stance. Ten lessons we want in stone are good to you kids. Looks like he's gone out that door. Um, I guess I should've saved it till after the meeting. I just didn't have a chance, but once again, I'd like to point out, there's no hours on any of these doors. There's no hours on the office either. There's the agenda, but no hours. And to be clear, there never has been. TGU Granville, this wasn't up. TGU Granville School is in session from seven thirty AM to four thirty PM, Monday through Friday. Um, disturbance of a public school, uh, penalty is a class B misdemeanor for any person to willfully disturb a public school that is in session, to willfully interfere or interrupt with proper order or management of a public school by an act of violence, boisterous conduct or threatening language, or rebuke, insult, or threaten a teacher in the presence of a student. Holy cow, they're trespassing tickets toast. I need to get a still of that. I just don't know if I safely can. I don't wanna shut this thing off or gamble. It should be a minute to restart it, but I don't wanna take a chance if one of them comes out of there screaming or threatening me. This was not here last time. According to this, they had no business ticketing me. My gut instinct was right about the gray area. The school was still in session. I better go ahead and, um, I better go ahead and knock it off, but I wanna go ahead and switch this over quick. I'm gonna gamble since I don't see anybody there, that nobody's gonna come out and misbehave. I've literally had people act like borderline, I mean, about right, it turned violent even today. Holy cow, Merry Christmas.